Are we ready with the microphone? Are we ready, Sarah? City TV, are we ready? Yes, we are ready. Great. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District's Board of Education. We convened our meeting at 4:50 PM this afternoon after we had an earlier special meeting, a closed session, which concluded at 4:35 in the afternoon. Out of closed session, we have one item this evening to report, and that is a final settlement agreement identified as OAH 201-805-0306. That final settlement agreement reads, "The district shall pay reasonable and compensable attorney fees not to exceed $175,000." The item was approved unanimously by the Board of Education, all members present except for Mr. De La Torre. Mr. Foster is here and did participate, and I expect him back on the dais momentarily. That being said, we will move to our pledge of allegiance, and maybe we could ask Gail to lead us in the pledge this afternoon. Please. Thank you, Gail. And hello, Gail. So our agenda this evening is, both in print form and, of course, online, we did add after the Friday posting, two different items, but those are public and made available to everybody on our website. We are pulling and postponing altogether an item from consent tonight, and that item is 6C15. That's 6C15. That is being pulled and will not be considered by the Board of Education this evening. Is there a motion to approve our agenda otherwise? Moved by Mr. Foster, seconded by Ms. Lieberman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. So that now brings us to the one set of minutes that we have to adopt and review, or review and adopt this evening, and those are minutes from our August 1st meeting.
All right, so there, as I understand it, there was apparently some miscommunication at a closed session. So under the three stipulated expulsions, my recollection, and I believe John's recollection is that it was, that John was the sole no vote, and that Oscar and I were yes votes. Yeah?
That's been corrected?
Yes.
The three expulsions that we did, that the sole no vote was...
I think the vote's wrong.
Right, and I just want to make sure I'm remembering it correctly, but I'm pretty sure that's right.
And Sarah has corrected it, so...
Great.
For adoption tonight, you'll see those, that correction. Any other items pertaining to the minutes of August 1? Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by Ralph, seconded by John. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, sir. Those pass unanimously. That now brings us to our superintendent's report, and you might say, "Richard, why are you passing over the commendations and recognitions?" And that's because it's time stamped for 6:30 PM. So that brings us to the superintendent's report.
I would like to invite up Kerry Upton to take my part in that, just to talk about the opening of schools and what's been taking place.
Thank you very much. The Facility Improvement's Office Maintenance Operations have been laboring and working all summer to improve the schools and get them ready to open. The, over the 10-week summer, all of the schools have been thoroughly cleaned. We have completed a significant number of work orders, the deferred maintenance projects that we had scheduled for the summer. We're finishing those up, including some very last-minute things that were very important, like for special education at Lincoln, a restroom there. We're getting that work done. We've continued the modernization and air conditioning projects. We crammed a lot into this short summer. We are wrapping everything up. It's, we are coming in, you know, in a short time. We're still getting things back in classrooms, getting them set up for teachers, making sure that's happening. That's particularly at Franklin, at McKinley, the preschool at Washington West. So we're getting those all ready, and we're also finishing up trying to make sure we're ready to open. It does look like we'll be, everything will be ready, but we're just lots of details to get ready for the new Malibu Elementary School to be open. Also, there was the work we did at the Barack and Michelle Obama Center for Inquiry and Exploration, so that we could have the new personalized project-based learning pathway to start. So that work is moving. And as many of y'all, some of y'all were there for the ribbon cutting, we did cut the ribbon on the new middle school building at Malibu High School. So we're working, still getting, there's still a lot of work to get done, but we do believe that we see everything will be ready to open next week. We do have some projects that, of course, are continuing, including our major constructions at Malibu High School, which is moving very, very quickly forward. At Santa Monica High School, you might have seen a large crane, and we're moving forward with the Performing Arts Center, and we'll be doing a ribbon cutting for that two weeks from now. I don't know. So if there are any questions, just to say, we are pushing forward to get it done.
And I wanted that report, just knowing that there was so much movement over the summertime. I'm sure people in the community and staff and people are probably wondering, hey, are things going to be settled by the time school starts? So as you heard, a lot of work went over the summertime to prepare for school. On top of that, there's been a lot of trainings the last two weeks, Resort of Justice, we have some, where a lot of teachers, I think there was about 90 teachers at, how many did we have, 90? Yeah, 90 teachers attended that. That's pretty impressive. We have, we also had, in the next two days, we have several teachers, a cohort of teachers in a deep learning, training around student engagement and project-based learning. So that's taking place. It started today and will end tomorrow, and just a lot going on before school starts.
Thank you.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, that now brings us to our consent calendar. I'd like to suggest that we pull and consider separately items 6D5, and that's for administrative appointments. Are there any other items that colleagues would like to pull? Mr. Metzer and then Ms. Leon Vasquez after.
Day 5.
6A5. The same? Oh, yes. Maria.
In the PO, the, I guess, July 29, 19, the music in motion, which is the Santa Monica College contract.
The purchaser?
The purchaser, yeah, for $16,000. Do you need the number, or? No? Okay, all right.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda absent those items? Moved by Mr. Foster. Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Metzer. Thank you. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, too. So absent 6D5, 6A5, and the purchase order stipulated by Ms. Leon Vasquez, the consent agenda has been approved unanimously. That'll bring us to item 6D5. Dr. Drati.
I would like to invite up Dr. Mora to come do the presentation.
So...
Have the administrative appointment.
Oh, sorry. That's the wrong one. All right. All right, so here we go. All right, it is my pleasure to introduce the new Malibu High School Assistant Principal, Mr. Adam Almeida. Once you come up, and I'll just kind of brag about you a little bit before you talk. Mr. Almeida comes from us from Renaissance Principals Admin Unit with the Los Angeles County Office of Education, where he has been serving as Assistant Principal. In this position, he manages 12 different school sites in establishing and promoting high standards and expectations while working with parents and families to be active in the school community. In his career of more than 20 years, Mr. Almeida has served as principal, assistant principal, assistant learning specialist, high school social science, and English teacher. He also was a varsity baseball coach for several years, and also served as Social Science Department Chair. He was previously held several athletic-related positions at USC, where he also, where he also went for his undergrad and on a baseball scholarship. Mr. Almeida earned a bachelor's degree in political science and education, as I mentioned, from USC, a master's degree in educational leadership and policy studies from Cal State Northridge, and is currently working towards his doctorate at Cal State Northridge in educational leadership and policy studies. Mr. Almeida is a strong addition to the Malibu High School leadership team, and we congratulate him on the new position.
Welcome. So we'll have you say a word in just one moment. Is there a motion to approve the item? Moved by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Keen. Let's move directly to a roll call vote. Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That's a unanimous vote of the Board of Education. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm definitely honored, and it's my pleasure to join such a wonderful district. I'm very excited to be a member of the administrative team at Malibu High School, and I'm looking forward to working with the students, the staff, and the community moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. Colleagues, that brings us now to item 6A5. They were both...
We're going to do that when she's actually here.
Both appointments. I think John is, Vice President Keen is asking, we just did. It's part of the same item.
Did you see her name out loud?
Oh, sorry.
So maybe, I just need to read our new Assistant Principal at PBL program, Nicole Nicodemus. And when she comes here, she's in Chicago, you met her via Skype or phone conference, but when she's actually here, able to be here, we'll read her information.
Thank you, John. Colleagues, but that was combined into the one consent item, and that was 6D5. Now 6A5. Ralph, did you want to speak to that?
I did. You know, certainly speaks strongly in favor of our MOU with the college for our, that's here before us tonight, which is actually a new, a second version of an MOU that we've had for the past three years. And I would just ask that, two things, a couple things. One is that we make sure we get an annual report of some kind on it. I think we're just now pulling together, you know, together the data from the last three years to understand how students have accessed, you know, the program. And so I would ask also that the President create a short-term task force to work with Dr. Mora and Dr. Drati and staff, just to look at and evaluate what's been working and not, and so if we need to talk to the college about other ways to make it, you know, a more successful and robust program. I know it's, there are areas where it's very strong and areas where, you know, we could look at expanding it. So, you know, with that, we'll move the approval.
Thank you. Mr. Foster? Of course. Would you mind seconding it first and then speaking, or second?
I'm a cheerful second.
Great, thank you. So, yes, discussion continues.
So I was going to speak to this with regard to an item later, but I'm troubled by two things. Thing number one is, when we pull stuff off consent and have further discussion, it's sort of this weird, almost not-quite discussion that we're not fully engaged in. And then the second thing is, it's very clear that no single board member has any power. It's four of us together in a majority. So when any board member, nothing particular here, but any board member says, "I'd like this and this and this," that has, to be clear to you guys, that has no meaning. I can say, "I'd like all the buildings painted green." You don't have to do that. If four of us say that, you do. So, and one of the things I've heard for years and years and years, the staff goes, "That's all very well, we just listened to 45 minutes of comments, but what are we supposed to do?" So the fact that a single board member just said that has no legislative, whatever the right word is, impact, because that was one board member expressing an opinion. So if we're going to do what, in this case, Ralph suggested, I think we would all have to go, "Yes, we want that," which is, I suppose, we can do, because it's a consent calendar item. But, and I'll, maybe, I don't know, I don't know how to bifurcate this over a couple of things, but the same thing happened last board meeting with regard to the FOC charges, and we left the FOC discussion with people having commented, but there was no vote, no change to those charges. Again, a board member suggested changes to the charges. It went back to the committee and came back as changed, but it was really not a serious discussion. It was not a discussion where the FOC was able to participate in front of us, and I just think that's an awful way to do business.
Mr. Foster, I appreciate the comments and duly noted, I think nicely said. For this particular moment, I could easily ask and will ask if the board is comfortable with the ask that Mr. Metzer has made. Of course, Mr. Metzer, you'll be able to respond. But I also want to note that you have two members of this board who cannot vote on this item because of our employment with Santa Monica College, and that it would require four members voting here. So I did understand that this is something that Mr. Metzer needs to have conveyed or to happen in order for him to feel comfortable voting for the item. That's how I read that, but I think you are absolutely right. That needs to be agreed to upon the rest of the voting members. So it's, Lori and John will be voting, along with you and Ralph. No, 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 they're not speaking here. It's your next friend. I was just saying that who would be voting on this item?
And I appreciate that, and I'm certainly not trying to strong-arm anybody, and I have been talking, you know, with Dr. Mora about this issue for a few days, and so I hope, you know, she can, you know, say that this is, you know, something that she feels is appropriate to do in this case. I agree, you know, the issue about what's on various portions of the calendar, which is a little, you know, off the topic.
Dear colleagues, dear colleagues, we cannot discuss, have this conversation. All we can do right now is ask whether or not there are a majority of the board who agree with the direction that Mr. Metzer is asking for, and then we're going to go to the item, and then we can clearly have a more robust conversation, discussion as pertaining to how we move forward on this. And again, this is a convention that we've been talking about for some time as a board. Is there anybody who disagrees with something that Mr. Metzer's asked for from staff?
Can I, I think, two things. One, I need to hear again exactly how you put it, because what I would say, I personally would like is, I agree that it would be a good thing for us to get the data about this program and who's participating, who's not, et cetera. But if I heard this right about setting up a committee, I don't support that. I support staff coming back with data and their evaluation of this in terms of the program. So that's, and then my second point is, I don't think it's a problem for you or Maria to weigh in on issues that are not voting on the agreement itself. In fact, I'm not even sure you have a real conflict on that, but I know you have a perceived one, and I appreciate that. But you partake in the discussion about classes and the kind of things we're doing anyway, so, and you're going to want to know or not know about that data, too, so, that's fine.
Thank you. John or Craig, would you like to add anything else here?
No, I think I'm in line with what Lori had to say, which is, Ralph brings up a great point, which is, we have a program that we're, we feel confident about, but it'd be great to have that assessment that shows us that what we feel is also happening on the ground. And again, I do agree with Lori that we don't need another committee on this. What we do need to do at some point, I believe, as a board, is to discuss all the SMC partnerships that we have, and then have clear goals and guidance that can then be given to staff so that they can do their work on that and then be reporting back to us in a timely manner. So I'd rather see it happen in that way than just another board committee.
And it's even broader, which I'm all for. Let me say that in the agreement, it requires that both agencies provide information about who's taking, you know, for the district, for, you know, enrollment, attendance, success, and that the college is actually supposed to, you know, provide us information on students and their grade levels, and they're supposed to provide data to the California, you know, community colleges, so that, you know, the credits can be there. We have no, we've never received anything, so I'm just asking, you know, that actually we start living to what's in the contract, and that will help us, you know, to be better in this relationship, and not just create things and then not have any idea of, you know, the success of the program.
Thank you, Ralph. I think Dr. Mora is going to mirror back how she hears the direction from the board. Dr. Mora?
So, good evening. So just to mirror back, what I'm hearing and my understanding is that, you know, the interest and the desire from the board is for me to come back and provide a report on the enrollment numbers based on our CCAP agreement. I do want to clarify for the board that I have received information from SMC, I've received the data. I am requesting a little bit of more time in order for me to validate the data with our internal SIS system, but I have received the information from SMC. I've been partnering with my contact there to ensure that we have all of that information. So I just want to share that with the board so that you know that information, but I, what I hear is that it will be, it is an ask for me to come and give an update on the courses, the participation, and the breakdown, demographic breakdown for the students who are participating. Am I correct?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mora.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. And Lori, I appreciate your comments about myself and Maria, and I just, I always like to say in this moment, too, that we have received, at least, we've been informed by our district, how do I say, district attorney, our district's council, that we could vote on these items. However, in an abundance of care and the perceived conflict, we choose not to. So we're ready for a roll call vote? Mr. Metzer?
I'm sorry, what's the, is it to approve as-is, or?
To approve as-is with the, as Dr., with the direction that Dr. Mora just articulated, which is absent of the committee.
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Abstention.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
I just want to say, I don't like making decisions this way. I think the appropriate time to have these conversations is when it's a discussion item. If it's prematurely on the consent calendar, I understand that somehow something was lost, that we missed something and it shouldn't have been, that's one thing. There are extraordinary circumstances, that's another thing. But I feel incredibly unprepared for these conversations. Typically, the people aren't in the room. Typically, we're not thinking of allocating the time for a proper discussion, so they become rushed, and it becomes an opportunity. It's almost like earmarks in Congress. Things just get stuck in, and if we create a habit of this, we're going to lose control of our deliberative process. So I am, I think we did have a shortcut in deliberative process, and in some way, maybe we should make all our decisions like this, because we get through them very quickly, but, so I'm going to vote yes, but I just need to state how strongly I feel about this, and I will start voting no, just because I hate the process if we keep this up.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Mr. Keen?
Yes.
And I'm an abstention, so that's a for an affirmative to abstentions.
Just ten seconds.
Of course, Mr. Metzer.
So this item has, unfortunately, was, has not been a discussion item. It was an information item at the last board meeting, and so it made it difficult. Board leadership makes a decision whether things are consent items or discussion or action items. Placing it in certain places makes certain assumptions, and so all we can do is ask that they be pulled off to have a discussion, which may mean we don't vote on them. I clearly, you know, understand, and would feel the same way on other items, but thank you for your support.
Certainly. I appreciate both your comments, and also, there's no problem or harm in tabling an item as well, if we feel like we need something to come back. Thank you for that. It moves us now to the purchase order, the item that has been pulled by Ms. Leon Vasquez. Do you have that number?
The item itself is just being pulled, and she will just need to abstain on the entire item, if she's abstaining on one of them.
Okay. So we're now going to entertain, I will entertain a motion to approve all purchase orders? Moved by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Keen. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
This is a...
This is the purchase order?
Oh, abstention.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also. And colleagues, in our Friday memo, we did have that, a memo from the attorney saying that when it comes to purchase orders, if we're getting a reimbursement, we're not necessarily required to, if we choose to do, but it's not a requirement to abstain if we are the named person getting a reimbursement. That now brings us to our first time-stamped item, and that time-stamped item is Major Action 7A, and we will hold a hearing to consider John Adams Middle School Preliminary Environmental Assessment equivalent. And so is there a motion to open this hearing? Moved by John, seconded by Lori. Let's vote on the opening of the hearing. Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so our hearing is open.
Just a little bit of support information on this. As part of our work in developing the John Adams Performing Arts Center, it is required that we do a Phase 1 environmental site assessment. That was done as part of the SEQA process, January 31, 2018, and the building materials were identified and abated prior to demolition. This work was completed in the spring. A work plan, though, was developed to address potential concerns in the shallow soils in the project area. There was one section of the soils through our consultant, the Converse Consultants, found that did contain a small area of lead, about 11 cubic yards of soil containing the lead. And on July 19, that small amount of soil was removed in accordance to our site-specific health and safety plan. The remediation is complete. The process included windscreen on the fencing around the project site, application of water for dust suppression, use of appropriate personnel protective, personal protective equipment, storing of the excavated soils in a closed container, and limiting access to non-authorized, non-trained personnel to the work areas. Tests were then confirmed that the remaining soil is well below the DTSC limit for lead. And in accordance with DTSC requirements for approval, an environmental oversight application was submitted on July 24, and that requires a 30-day public comment period and a public hearing to accept the public comment. Usually, this would have done just as a good housekeeping measure, but because we're also seeking state funding, this is one of the requirements, is the DTSC, we get the sign off from DTSC, so we have this opportunity, this 30-day opportunity to say, "We did this. This is how we did it," and to see if anyone has a comment on it.
Thank you, Kerry. John, is there anybody from the public wanting to address us on this item? Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the hearing? Moved by Ms. Leon Vasquez, seconded by Ms. Lieberman. Mr. Metzer, how do you vote to close the hearing?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also. That concludes that major action item. I will now move to item 7C, which is Resolution Number 1901, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds of school facilities improvement district.
You skipped out on item B.
I did skip out on item B, because item's...
And I see the timestamp.
Why would the timestamp be 6? Why would the timestamp be 6:30 for item B?
No, um, no.
My bifocals aren't working then. So I skipped item B because my, my, unlike yours, is it's time stamped at 6:30. Moving back up to approving the naming of the Santa Monica track. This is a nice one. Dr. Droudi?
I'd like to invite up Carrie Upton to come present the item.
You all discussed this last week, last time, and we are moving forward. If you were to approve the name of the Patrick Cady Track at Santa Monica High School, we'll have the lettering placed on that track for the memorial on the 25th. And then there is a plaque that we're working on to be put up on that campus, designating and signifying the importance of Pat Cady and his work with our students over his long career in so many different ways, to honor him for the work that he did.
Thank you, Carrie. Is there a motion for the dyes? Moved by Maria, seconded by Lori. Mr. Metzer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also. It's a unanimous vote of the Board of Education. And Carrie, you had said that the, I know when we had asked, when we discussed this, when do we think that this would actually be complete? We were hoping that...
We'll have the paint on the track by the 25th, which is the Sunday they're doing the memorial, August 25th.
Great.
The plaque, we're still working out the exact text and location, but we are going to have that, and we'll find a moment when school resumes, and we have the track across country team there to signify that event.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you very much. I believe that now takes us to 7E, which is the 2019-20 Financial Oversight Committee charges that is returning to us.
Not CD right there.
Friends, D is also time stamped.
C and D are time stamped for 6:30.
6:30. I fixed the bifocals.
We went, we went faster. There's a master agreement.
We're at E?
We're going to do the E right now.
I'm on E.
Which is here.
I'm on E. Financial Oversight Committee.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the item? Ralph moves the item. Is there a second? Seconded by John. We have had a conversation about this in the past. It comes to us as a vote. Let's move to a roll call vote. Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, so that is a unanimous approval, Sarah, of item 7E, the Financial Oversight Committee's charges for 2019-2020. It moves us now to 7F, as in Frank, which is approving the master agreement between the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District and Malibu LEAD. Dr. Droudi?
Yes, so, as you know, that we had, you, we voted to, or you voted to separate the centralized fundraising entities between Santa Monica and Malibu. And Santa Monica was formed over the, last summer, in which they've been in operation. But you also know that Malibu, because of the circumstances that occurred with the fire and different things, they had a difficult time getting organized. We have now come to an agreement, we believe, and is represented with, with the MOU you see before you. So we're bringing it to you to get signed off so they can get going on their fundraising efforts.
Thank you, Dr. Droudi. Is there a motion to approve the MOU? Moved by Mr. Foster, seconded by Ms. Lieberman. Any conversation or discussion?
I have a question. Is this an agreement only? It's not a revision of the agreement with the Santa Monica Education Foundation? It's just Malibu LEAD?
Yeah, it addresses, it addresses both.
I'm going to abstain.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ralph. Yes, Lori?
Clarify something, which I should have clarified before today, but, so does this then replace the existing agreement with the, with Smith?
Good question. I will, because it does address both. It does address both. I believe it does then. I mean, it's, it's consistent to what...
Rather than there be a legal interpretation, I would like to find out whether we intended to do that, which I assume we did, but I just want to make sure.
The assumption was that, no, the assumption was that this new document would supersede the, the older one and incorporate both, but, so I'm not concerned where you are. I'm just going to make sure that this does actually accomplish that. We don't have to do anything else.
So we're going to get some additional information right now. Remember Foster is getting some, so, well, I'm going to move to item 7G, noting that we have this both moved and seconded. We're going to come back to it, Sarah. We're going to go to 7G first.
What is 7G?
I mean, not first. 7G, friends, is not on your printed. Remember, this was a late ad. This is the high school course approval, particularly computer science principles.
I would like to invite up Dr. Jacqueline Mora to do, to present the item.
So, good evening, Board President, members of the Board, Dr. Droudi, cabinet and guests. I actually would like to invite Ms. Lauren Polly Sheehan, who will be actually introducing this for us. She is one of our House Principals from Samo High.
Good evening, members of the Board. Dr. Droudi, thank you so much for allowing me to present to you this evening. I am requesting, on behalf of Santa Monica High School, the addition of a computer science principles course as a portion of our project Lead the Way for your STEM curriculum. If you have in front of you access to our PowerPoint presentation... One moment, please. Not clicking. He could click for me, perhaps. Perfect. Thank you. So the rationale for adding computer science principles to our four-year Project Lead the Way continuum is to enhance the offerings that are part of the four-year program within Project Lead the Way, and to add additional options in such a breadth of content that might be available to students within an engineering pathway. The computer science principles course is a new course that is a curricular option added to the Project Lead the Way curriculum, which we would love to adopt, adding a more specific programming and web app program to the components that are already in place within our curriculum. In the four-year pathway, all students in the Project Lead the Way curriculum will begin with intro, introduction to engineering design. This course is an overview of all of the potential areas of engineering careers that students might encounter, and to give them a taste of what each of those kinds of engineering options might be, from civil engineering, chemical engineering, materials engineering, mechanical engineering, and so on. Within the student sophomore and junior years, we currently offer digital electronics as the next course in the pathway. And we would love to offer the computer science principles as an option for our students and a new pathway for them to enhance their experience within the STEM curriculum. And then in the senior year, all students will come back together with a capstone project-based encounter, where our students will do research in their own area of interest, and they become makers within that curriculum. The students invent, so to speak, their own project, and then market that project to outside sources. They work within the community of engineers to present their idea, and we have even had some students apply for patents within that fourth-year opportunity in the Project Lead the Way pathway. So what we are requesting is for the Board to approve this new path, new concentration within the Project Lead the Way pathway. The teacher who will be leading this course did attend a summer Project Lead the Way training, and so the only materials are the consumable materials that are estimated by Project Lead the Way annual expenses of $765. That will be all of the supplies needed annually for our students. And as you may see, many of the items that are listed here, like six table tennis balls, we might be able to come up with in an alternative way, perhaps through donation, but they're not grand expenditures. One of the exciting features of adding the computer science principles course is that this class does correspond to the engineering and architecture CTE sector, creating an additional CTE pathway. And it also is endorsed by the College Board, making students who complete this curriculum eligible to take the AP College Board test in computer science principles, which piloted just two years ago. The addition of this course does align well with the LCAP goals for Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District, as it increases our students' ability to be college and career-ready. There are pathways within Project Lead the Way which will lead to four-year college opportunities, two-year college opportunities, and even career skills with the certification that can be accomplished by students at the end of the four-year Project Lead the Way pathway. And lastly, the standards are aligned to the A through G UC-approved courses, and also to the College Board curricula and the Project Lead the Way curricula, which we already have in place within our school district. So with that, I would appreciate your support in allowing us to add this course as an offering to our Project Lead the Way choices.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the course? Moved by Maria, seconded by Mr. Foster. Ralph?
A question. So, here, it may be a cross-opportunity. So, in looking at the potential list of courses in our dual enrollment item, which we just previously talked about, that has a Python programming class, which would be offered in the spring. It's a, that would be, that's a different class?
This would be more of the introductory overview of the computer science principles, and then students who continue to have an interest in the area of programming might then move on to a community college dual enrollment, concurrent enrollment course offered with an MOU to our local community college.
Great, thank you.
Can you clarify? Because this course is being approved within the sequence of Project Lead the Way. It's not necessarily open to all the students at the college. And the ones that we offer, well, the classes that are being offered in terms of the computer science is a four, four-course sequence for juniors and seniors. And there's also certification involved with that piece. But that's open for everybody in that, this Project Lead the Way.
That's correct.
Thank you, Maria. Let's move to a vote. Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes, as long as I can take the class.
Sure.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
I'm a yes too. Thank you so much for being here.
Excellent, thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
It's a unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Colleagues, now we'll go back to our MOU on the LEAD. Dr. Droudi?
I got a message out to Mrs. Linda Greenberg, and just to let her know that the agreement would supersede the original agreement. She still hasn't responded to me, but I'm confident that she'll be okay with that.
Great, thank you. So, we'll move to a vote. You're abstaining, Mr. Metzer?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Oh, we're on to the LEAD MOU. Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So that's with one recusal. Mr. Metzer has recused himself, and the other five members are voting affirmatively. We have three items time stamped, and if there's no objections, I'd like to go to 7C first and 7D, and we can conclude our evening with the receiving of the check. So let's move to 7C, which is resolution 1901. That is the authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds of school facilities improvement district number one for Santa Monica schools from our election of 2018 Series A, and the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $110 million in approving related documents and actions. Melody?
Good evening, Board. Actually, I am not that great of an expert at this, but I do have two experts in the audience with us tonight. We have, excuse me, I almost said Greg. We have John Isom with Isom Advisors, and Courtney Jones with Jones Hall and Associates, is it right? Yeah.
Jones Hall is a professional law firm.
Professional law firm, there we go. So I'm going to ask John to come up, and, actually, both of you to come on up, and if there's any questions or what have you, they should be able to help us with that.
Do we have any questions about the issuance? Seeing no questions, we'll move directly to a vote. Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
We're passing Mr. Foster for the moment. Mr. Keen?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mr. Foster?
Yes. Bond for Santa Monica, yes, I'm a yes.
Yes, thank you so much. That passes unanimously. That's item 7C, which is resolution number 1901. We'll now move, colleagues, to 7D, which is the resolution number 1902. This is authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds of school facilities improvement district number two, our Malibu schools, the election of 2018 Series A, and the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $35 million, and approving related documents and actions. Is there a motion to approve that resolution? Moved by Lori Lieberman, seconded by Craig Foster. Are there any questions for our guests?
Sarah, did we, that typo, did we need to correct that, or is that just fine?
Has it corrected the dollar amount for item two, or is it all my question, one that we were...
Okay, so that's all good. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Foster, for correcting that or bringing that to our attention. That now brings us to a roll call vote. Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That is a, again, a unanimous vote of the Board of Education. Our last item on tonight's agenda is moving back up to commendations and recognitions, and we have our friends from the Santa Monica Education Foundation here this evening.
I'm recusing myself for the item.
Thank you, Ralph.
How do you, how do you put this on?
Welcome.
Hi there. Is this on? It is. Good evening. We are honored to be here tonight to give our report on the 2018-2019 campaign, and to announce our grant to the district for the 2019-2020 programs in our Santa Monica schools.
Okay. We had a great year. As you can see, parents donated more, 9% more.
Okay. We had a great year. As you can see, parents donated more, nine percent more over 2017-18, for a total of one point, almost $1.7 million. We had a good increase in parent participation from 42% the year before to 47%, and we also saw growth in both of our major donor giving circles.
Our fourth annual wine auction raised a record $333,000, and that was fabulous. This event is hosted by the Fairmont Miramar, and as you know, features incredible food and wine and fun auction items, and a very lively paddle race. So that's always fun. We were honored that some of our fifth graders taught by the SMC Dance Academy joined our event to show off their ballroom dancing skills, and it was a really heartwarming, heartwarming moment for all of our guests. This year, we introduced, do I do this? This year, we introduced a grandparents circle, and in our first inaugural year, we raised $43,632 from grandparents. So that's pretty exciting, and we look forward to this circle growing in the years to come. We had 40 businesses participate in our Corporate Heroes program, and they collectively donated $358,880. So, sorry. We are thrilled to let you know, wait, did I do, go backwards?
Oh, yeah.
You go, sorry. Sorry, I'm not, yeah. This, we're, this is what we're thrilled to let you know, that we have, we're going to be writing you a check for $2,104,564. We're very happy about that.
So we just thought we would bring you up to date where we are with our current year, 2019-20 campaign, which kicked off on July 1st. We started with our joint mailings for JAMS, Lincoln, and Samo High. This month, we're mailing to all of our 18, 19 donors as part of our big renewal mailing. We are distributing all of our joint ask letters with our, that we have with our elementary PTA partners. We've been planning back-to-school activities at each school. We've been at TKK welcome events. We were at the New Teacher Academy earlier this week, and we've been at numerous other events. Next week, we're hosting our big kickoff meeting with the PTA presidents and Ed Foundation chairs, and we'll be meeting with principals. And we look forward to having a presence at all of our, all of the back-to-school nights starting on the 27th. We're excited to announce that as of today, we've reached, we've raised a total of $450,933, which is actually a 32% increase over this time last year. So we hope that this keeps up, and we have another record fundraising year to support all students.
I think parents and community members are just getting in the habit of giving, which is exactly what we want to create, a culture of giving every single year. So, looking forward to this year, in addition to our annual fund efforts, we are going to focus on more, more on planned giving, working with trust and estate attorneys to really get people to understand that it's never too early to plan your estate. And we want everyone to know that including the Ed Foundation in their will is easy and impactful. It's a, it's a true way to leave a legacy in the community that benefits our students. In that spirit, we are kicking off a retiree reunion on November 6th, and for former Santa Monica and district employees. Details will follow. We're still settling which venue and everything, but I'm really excited about this. I, I finally got tired of reconnecting with people at funerals. That's really, you know, you go, you're very sad that someone has passed, but you get to see people you haven't seen in a really long time, and it's a real celebration in a way. And so I thought a more joyful reunion would be something like this on an annual or every other year basis. And even if we will be mentioning the Ed, leaving the Ed Foundation in their wills, we plan for it to be a really fun and an event that our retirees look forward to every year. And as soon as we secure a couple of big lead gifts, we're going to, we're planning to launch our athletic endowment this year. And I do want to thank our Samo High's Athletic Director, Evan Fujinaga, as well as Brian Partt, for their work over the past year in helping us figure out what the needs were, what the costs were, what the middle school program would look like. It's just, they were extremely helpful and a pleasure to work with. So we'll be sharing more about this with you soon. And this is a little message, Sarah, that we shared with our donors, and we'll share it with you. Take a few seconds. So obviously, that's just a few seconds of thanks from students, but it reminds our donors exactly why they're giving, and it's a really, everybody smiles when they see it, and we like to thank our donors as much as possible. So I think I'm going to end tonight with a story about Katie Richards, who just graduated from Samo High in June. She was, when she was, since she was a toddler, excuse me, Katie loved to build things. When Katie got to Samo High, she enrolled in Project Lead the Way, the four-year engineering program partially funded by donations to the Ed Foundation, where she got to design and build a variety of projects from circuits to hydrogen-powered cars. Last spring, Katie was called to the principal's office. She worried. She thought she must have filled out an absence form incorrectly or done something wrong, but when she got there, she was greeted by cameras, balloons, her mom, and grandparents, and the CEO of Edison International, who was holding a scholarship check for $40,000. Katie is one, is one of only 30 students in Southern California to receive this scholarship this year. She won it for her creation of a physical sensor that measures temperature, static electricity levels, and sound around electrical wires to quickly detect potential brush fires. So what we like to tell our donors all the time is, thanks for making these opportunities possible for all of our kids. And thank you tonight, and I think, we don't, Melody, where are you? We don't have the real check, but Rachel will, you're supposed to go hold that check, Rachel. We'd like a little picture with our board members, Sarah, Jacqueline, Mark. We'd love a picture that we can then send out to our...
Thank you very much to our friends at the Ed Foundation. Thank you for your hard work. We are so appreciative. Colleagues, that now brings us to our focusing on the information items. I just want to draw your attention to those. And we have no general public comments for us this evening. Are there any board member comments before we call for adjournment? Seeing no board member comments, I'd like to thank this board. We've had a very long day. We've been together for about seven hours. It's been very good work. Thank you to the public for tuning in to this last summer meeting that we're having, and we wish our entire staff all the best as they do the very fine work at getting our schools open in the next week or so, and we'll see everybody at convocation on Monday. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Maria, seconded by Lori. All in favor, say aye. We stand adjourned.